I'd like to call the August 10, 2023 Surf City Planning Board Meeting to order. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda is approved. May I also get a motion to approve the minutes of the July 13 Planning Board Meeting?
I'll motion.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? No?
No, we had someone sign up, but they're here to speak on their project when it comes forward, not for public comment.
Okay, thank you. So moving right into our agenda, tonight we have two special use permits that we need to consider and discuss, and so Amy, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. We will start with the McDaniel Bats Boat Storage Special Use Permit. This project is located on JH Bats Road. The proposed project consists of approximately 1.52 acres of RV and boat storage. The site comprises two phases totaling 72 uncovered spaces. This property is bordered on the north, south, and east by C3 zoning and mixed use to the west. Boat houses, boat docks, fishing piers, dry storage, and marinas commercial is a listed use in the table of uses. However, commercial recreational vehicle storage is not listed in the table of uses. So we typically stick that kind of with boat storage since it's a similar motorized vessel vehicle storage. Boat storage does require a special use permit for approval. Appendix A Section 8 Special Use Permit defines the approval process for special use permits. The special use permit process decision is made by the town council after an evidentiary hearing is held. The ordinance requires that the four findings are met. The first finding is that the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and approved by the issuance of the special use permit. The second one is that the use meets all required conditions and specifications. The third one is that the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or that the use is a public necessity. And finally, that the location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and in general conformity with the land use plan and its policies for growth and development as applicable to the town of Surf City. The proposed site plan requests two access points to JH Bats Road. Per Appendix, per Section 5.12 of Appendix A, the site plan is required to install sidewalk along the JH Bats Road frontage. The comprehensive bicycle and pedestrian master plan also supports this requirement by recommending a sidewalk along JH Bats Road. The development is not requesting sewer or water from the town. The site plan shows that the lot surface area will contain a pervious stone. However, the applicant has placed a non-pervious stone on the site. If the non-pervious stone remains, the applicant will provide a stormwater plan for the site. The applicant will also verify with NCDEQ the requirements pertaining to the state stormwater permit. If NCDEQ does not require a stormwater permit, the applicant will meet Appendix A Section 5.9 of the Surf City zoning ordinance. The proposed site plan does not provide an onsite office. It only provides the ability to store boats and RVs, so we will not require designated parking. Per Appendix A Section 5.11 Mini Storage Facilities, a buffer of dense evergreen trees and shrubs not less than six feet in height and of a spread and spacing so as to form the continuous unbroken screen between the storage facility and adjoining property will be placed on all property lines. So in conclusion, the comprehensive land use plan shows this area as neighborhood mixed use. Neighborhood mixed use allows for a transition between more intense commercial office and residential development to lower density residential neighborhoods, as well as opportunities for strategic low intensity nodes of commercial activity. The neighborhood mixed use category is primarily dedicated to non-residential uses that provide services, entertainment, and amenities to residents within a three mile radius. This future land use category should be composed of a mixture of integrated commercial office institutional and residential uses. This future land use classification is not intended to be solely reserved for mixed use developments. Single use developments that contribute toward an integrated land use pattern of appropriate commercial office civic and medium density residential uses are encouraged. Appropriate uses include neighborhood scale retail, restaurant, and office establishments, religious and educational institutions, and higher density single family duplex and limited town home developments. Large scale or intense commercial establishments, multifamily developments, and industrial operations are not appropriate. Building footprints are generally limited to 15,000 square feet or smaller. So our desired uses again are commercial, retail, and office uses that serve existing communities, or single family duplex and limited town. Inappropriate uses would be establishment required requiring large surface parkings in excess of 20,000 square feet, low density residential use, or industrial uses. So staff recommends approval of the site plan, or of the special use permit I should say, with the following conditions. One, that the vegetative plantings located within the 10-foot road frontage buffer and property buffer will meet the requirements of Appendix A Section 5.11 Mini Storage Facilities, and Appendix A Section 5.7 Landscaping and Tree Requirements. The applicant will submit a detailed planting plan and list for approval before installation. You'll note that that's not clearly shown on your site plan, so that's why we're calling it out here. The applicant will either provide town staff with a copy of the approved NCDEQ High Density State Stormwater Permit, or an Engineered Stormwater Management Plan, meeting the requirements of Appendix A Section 5.9 Stormwater Management Plan, before the construction of any built upon area. Per Appendix A Section 3.4 Built Upon Area, built upon areas shall include the portion of a development project and/or lots that are covered by impervious or partially impervious cover, including buildings, pavement, gravel roads, recreation facilities such as tennis courts, et cetera. Wooden slatted decks and the water area of a swimming pool are considered pervious. If a clean wash stone is used for the surface, it will be considered pervious for the purposes of Appendix A Section 5.9. So if a clean wash stone is used, it would not need that stormwater permit because DEQ finds that as a pervious material, whereas a gravel with like fines in it, or a crush and run, and ABC, any of those lot surfaces would be considered non-pervious. And then the driveway will be concrete from the edge of the asphalt to the property line. Does the planning board have any questions for me?
I do right off the bat, just kind of looking at this. It says inappropriate uses are 20,000 square feet of large surface parking area. Isn't this basically just a large surface parking area right here?
So, yes and no. The use is actually is the storage, which is not, boat and RV storage is not addressed in our comprehensive land use plan. I think in the land use plan, this is talking about bigger retail buildings that would require parking that is just to park to use that service, where this is a storage service, not a parking lot. If that, does that kind of make sense? Because I'm with you on that.
Yeah, I kind of understand where you're coming from, but it kind of, kind of, they both kind of end up at the same point. You might, you basically have the parking lot without the building. So you just have a big parking lot in there. It seems like that our land use plan, I mean, just from my understanding of it, you know, it was meant to service the community and be as like a, like you said, like coffee shop or offices or something, a little bit more low, you know, that would serve as an amenity, and also not be kind of an eyesore of a big thing, just a big open space with a bunch of cars, or RVs, or trucks in there, or boats, so.
So I think on the, on the flip side of that, the traffic draw for this is much lower. So even though, you know, one of the things with that large surface parking lot is that you have a significant amount of traffic coming and going to those uses, where this is some, you know, a few people coming maybe a couple of times a day. Maybe we have a few more people on Friday and Sunday when they're returning their boats or whatnot. So I think part of that with the large scale parking is, you know, is dealing with the traffic, and this would be a much lower traffic generator for this parcel than say, a restaurant or a coffee shop or whatnot. But I definitely see your point. That was just kind of some of my thought process in this.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. Yeah, I think, I think the way I read it is probably just a little bit different than, than kind of where you're coming from, is that it's, if, for me, the comprehensive land use plan, this would not be a use that would be in that, in that, in that spot. It was more for, like we said, like commercial and retail, something that was an amenity to the residents around there, and then just having a boat storage is not necessarily an amenity to them, or just, or, I mean, just to have that. In that mixed use area, it does not seem like that's an appropriate use for that area, to me, in there.
I tend to agree with Steve on that. It's not maybe as clear as it should be, but.
How about the location of the gate in relation to the roadway, as far as its proximity? The spaces are noted as 35 feet long, and then you're looking at an additional 20 feet for your trucks. I mean, you're in the 60-foot, 70-foot range, just to get off the road, and these gates look like they're maybe 20 feet off the road. So I mean, does the boat and RV just stay in the road as the gate opens, or?
So we're still going to finalize the review during the TRC process for the final, for a few of the final things, like the, the plantings not being shown. So that would be something that we would definitely review during that time and make sure that the gates are set far enough back to accommodate the largest vehicle anticipated to be parked there.
And that issue is kind of duplicated by having two entrances side by side. Seems kind of unnecessary to access one.
I don't think that's appropriate at all, the two entrances. That would be a cluster. You have somebody trying to turn in the first driveway, and there's somebody coming around and to get into the second.
Just doesn't seem necessary.
Should be a pool in and around. You don't want to be backing those boats up.
So the applicant is here tonight. If that is something that the planning board feels strongly about and would recommend approval, and like that added, that there could only be one driveway access point is something that we can ask them, and they can say, yes, they're fine with that. We will look at that through the TRC process, but if it's something that they're willing to agree to tonight, we can make that request to add it to the special use permit.
If the applicant would like to speak, please come to the podium.
It's kind of been a back and forth thing with Mr. Riggs on exactly how it's supposed to go. It's not supposed to be two different entrances. Technically, the way it's, we're starting with phase one is what we'd like to do, and then once we can open up to phase two, it's just going to be one lot. I don't really understand why you had it like that, like it's two separate lots. It's not supposed to be like that at all. It's supposed to just be one full lot, and it'd be one entrance, that you can go any way you want in the property. So I don't.
So we can put in there, if, if we recommended approval, we can put that the, the site will only have one access point to JH Bats Road, which Mr. Bats is amenable to.
How about the proximity of the gate to the road?
From what I was told, and again, this is from what I'm getting from Mr. Riggs, that we're supposed to have a 30-foot setback with that. That's what I'm told. I mean, obviously, we can make adjustments if we need to. I mean, we're up for whatever we really need to do to get it done. So I mean, if we need to make it cut in to, into the properties, to where you get 60-foot in, so you can get everything off the road, we can work that out as well.
I don't see any way you could possibly pull in there without getting off the road. I mean, that's kind of not even negotiable, really. I don't understand how that could even be allowed, to sit in the middle of the road and wait for a gate to open.
That's saying, that's what we're told, I mean, that we're supposed to have. That's just what I'm, I'm told.
If you're okay with it, we can put that stacking of one vehicle and trailer will be allowed completely off the road, that the gate will be set back to accommodate the queue or stacking of one vehicle with trailer.
I think she needs you to state your name.
McDaniel Bats.
Does he might have any additional questions for?
One last one. The mini storage had a continuous buffer along the roadway. These, it says the vegetation's set 20 feet apart. Am I misreading that, or is that an unbroken?
Mr. McDaniel's has had a little, or Mr. Bats has had a little bit of trouble getting some of the changes on the site, and that's why we went back and wrote in Appendix, Appendix A Section 5.11, in an effort to not have to have another drawing be submitted prior to being able to make it to planning board. We have discussed that, so that will be modified prior to the issuance of the final permit.
Does the fire hydrant own the site plan by chance, or?
John has been out there and, and measured it, and he is acceptable with the location of the current fire hydrant.
Mr. Riggs, I spoke with him yesterday, and he also told me that, you know, I don't know how these maps are wrote out, but he says that the entire proximity of the lot are within the parameters for that fire hydrant. He said it was on the site plan. Again, I don't, you know, I don't really know how that's wrote out, but that's what he told me yesterday. And yesterday's the first time I've actually spoke with him on the phone, so it's.
So Fire Marshal Burton did go out there last Friday and verify his measurements, and he is okay with the way that the fire hydrant is located.
Does the site plan have to be correct before it goes to council, or does this one get to go to council?
I think we're just, we were just approving a special use permit so they can move forward because it's not one of the uses of private on this.
Yeah, so tonight we'll approve the special, or we will make a recommendation. Council will make a decision to approve or not approve. During that time, we will work through finalizing and making sure that the, the site plan shows all of this. Also, council has the opportunity to add or delete or change, so we will make sure that that finalized site plan has everything that's in the final recommendations from council, if approved, prior to closing out that permit and allowing him to begin construction.
Amy, would you read back to us the three things you were going to put on this?
Yes, ma'am. I have two. Am I supposed to have three?
Okay.
We discussed the other one, but it didn't come up.
Let me, let me start, and you tell me if I need to add something else. The site will only have one access to JH Bats Road. And then I have that the applicant will provide storage/stacking for one boat and trailer not located within the right of way. This is approximately 70 feet. Did we have another, did we discuss another one?
70 feet, you said?
Approximately 70 feet.
Okay. I'll make a motion with the limitations.
A motion to?
Approve the special use permit with the corrections that we talked with Amy about. The driveway.
So with conditions one through five?
Yes. You want to ask for a second?
I'm sorry, I was reading. Do I have a second? So the motion is not carried. Do we have any discussion?
Well, yeah, I mean, I just don't think it's an appropriate use for that area under a special use permit, so I'm going to make a motion to deny the special use permit for this site.
I second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion.
All right, our next item tonight is a boat storage located on NC 50. The owner of this is Equity Trust, Care of Robert Green, and the agent is Weston Lyle. The acreage is approximately 1.49 acres. The proposed use is boat storage, which is by special use permit in the C3 Extended Entranceway Commercial District. The proposed project consists of 20 covered boat and watercraft storage spaces on approximately 1.49 acres. The property is bordered on the north, south, and west by C3 zoning and multifamily cluster on the east.
The property is bordered on the north, south, and west by C-3 zoning and multifamily cluster on the east. I'm not going to read back through the definition of boat houses and all of that. I think y'all will remember that.
Thank you.
Kind of, this is a very similar type product. So the proposed site plan requests one access on NC-50. The applicant will have to apply to NCDOT for a driveway permit for this site. So the determination of it being concrete and the radiuses and whatnot will be determined by then. The development is requesting water only from the town. They are not requesting any sewer because they're not requesting any bathroom facilities. A fire hydrant must be within four hundred feet of any structure or portion of the storage yard. If a fire hydrant is not within this distance, a fire hydrant will be required. So we will verify that. If approval is recommended, we would verify that prior, again, to the site being approved. The site plan shows that the lot's surface area would contain a pervious stone as well as a nine thousand seven hundred and two-square-foot building. If NCDEQ does not require stormwater permit, the applicant will meet Appendix A Section 5.9 of the Stormwater Management Plan of the Surf City zoning ordinances and provide an engineered stormwater system for the building only. If they switched to a different stone, obviously, they would have to incorporate that as well, but it does show a pervious stone. As with the other boat and RV storages, we do not require parking as you're just there trading out your RV or your boat. Again, we will require that they meet the mini-storage facilities landscaping requirements with the dense evergreen trees and shrubs. So this is in the same neighborhood mixed-use area, although it is located on NC-50, which is a more traveled corridor. So the comprehensive land use plan follows with the same desired uses of commercial, retail, and office uses that serve existing communities, examples including restaurants, cafes, drugstore, healthcare facilities, professional offices, and retail-oriented uses. And again, with the inappropriate uses of establishments requiring large-surface parking in excess of twenty thousand square feet, low-density residential and industrial uses. Staff recommends approval of the site plan with the following conditions. They're basically the same with the vegetative plantings located within the ten-foot of the roadway buffer and property buffer, meeting Appendix A Section 5.11. The applicant will either provide town staff with a copy of the NCDEQ High Density State Stormwater Permit, or they will follow the requirements of the town's ordinance found in Appendix A Section 5.9. The driveway will be concrete from the edge of asphalt to the property line. That is a standard NCDOT requirement, but we wanted just to go ahead and put it in there. And then the fourth one that we added on this one, since it had a structure shown on it, is that the architectural plans will be submitted to the town for review and approval before the submittal of any building permits. The submittal will be consistent with Appendix A Section 4.5 Non-Residential Facade and Site Design Standards for Non-Out Parcel Lots and relevant definitions found in Appendix A Section 3.0. Happy to answer any questions.
What is the proposed water line for?
Just a faucet is what, like a spigot, was what was shown.
I'm going to go by the catch placement.
So when it says it's covered, is it like dry stack?
This is intended to be a single-level, one-story, just like an O-three-sided barn, similar to what's beside the car wash. And that's why they would have to submit the architectural drawings to show that it met our architectural standards prior to construction.
Not fully enclosed structures, then. They're like a lean-to.
That is more my understanding, that it wouldn't be like a garage door that you pull into.
And I'll have to say that I do not like this plan, and I'll tell you why. It's on our main corridor coming into Surf City. I don't think it's going to look very well on the town. I think it's going to cause traffic hazards. I don't know about the water part of it. There's different requirements when you have use of water, depending on what you're using it for. Any other comments?
Just the dimension of the spaces, what they're... Is it thirteen-foot wide and then thirty-six-foot deep? Is that what I'm reading?
Yes.
That's what, like, each individual spot is? And there's twenty spots total?
And I think, and I think in lieu of what we did previously on the previous project, it kind of, for consistency purposes, it feels like we should probably be on the same side as that as well.
I understand the other one better than this one because it's off the beaten path, but this is at the gateway to our beach.
I'll make a motion to deny, recommend to deny, the special use permit for this project as well.
I'll second.
So we have a first and a second to deny. Do we have any discussion, or are you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye. Motion is not carried.
These are the only items I have for the, for discussion tonight.
Do you have general project updates?
I do. So you should be able to see on your screen now kind of my cheat sheet list of what we have. Do I need to make that bigger, or y'all? Is that better? So the Ricardi site plan, or Rickyardi site plan, we are waiting on the engineer on that. It was recently presented with some documents that may change some of the access points on that. So I will be reaching out to them into this week, beginning the next week. The Applewood Trace rezoning, we are waiting for additional information from them. So we're in a holding pattern right now. The Chug and Grub, the Turco H2O Phase 2, and the Bishop Creek Phase 2 projects were all on your agendas last month, and were all approved by council on 8/1/23. Mr. Batz's project and the bottom one, the boat storage, were tonight. And then we are waiting on the engineer for the Batz Mobile Home Park, which is a five-lot mobile home subdivision-ish on Little Kinston Road. So it's a subdivision, but because it's in MHS, it can have manufactured homes, modular homes, or stick-built homes. The Hines Trailer Park, the reason, it is broken up so that you have the subdivision portion, which is the portion by the ocean. And then there are site plans for the townhomes based on how, kind of where they fall between the roads. And those are the main projects that we have right now in the queue that have been submitted. I don't have anything else. And then, as y'all all know, Steve retired on August 5th. And Kenneth Batz, Kenneth Morrison is our new building inspector. For those of y'all who don't know him, Kenneth comes to us with seventeen years of experience as a building inspector. He previously owned his own electrical company prior to that. So he has a wealth of knowledge, and we are glad to have him. If you have any questions, he has all the same phone numbers that Steve had. So if you have any of Steve's cell phone or office phone extensions and all of that, he has all of those numbers and can be reached that way. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Amy. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.